All right, stop and steal our North Carolina state capitalism. We can probably take a stand.
Commissioner Brady, we are now live.
Welcome to the first Sandusky City Commission meeting of 2021, Commissioners. Prior to tonight's meeting, we'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Meinzler, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we are meeting here today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Depart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today, and please help guide the Ohio State Buckeyes to a victory tonight. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wichita, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Briggs, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinzler?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Commissioners, do you have before you the minutes of our meeting of December 28th, 2020? What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I move that we accept the minutes of the December 28th meeting and dispense with a formal reading.
Second.
There are a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Once again, we're holding this Sandusky City Commission meeting both in live and electronically. Commissioners and staff are in attendance through an internet hookup in a variety of safe locations. We've asked our audience to either submit their questions or their comments in writing to our commission clerk, and we will answer those questions that pertain to legislation as that legislation comes before us, as well as provide a response to any other audience questions from the appropriate staff. I would also like to acknowledge the fact that those participating in this meeting are doing so with the appropriate distancing and face masks. Mr. Briggs, do we have any questions from the public that pertain to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President, we did not receive any questions pertaining to the agenda.
Commissioners, do you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation? Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So moved.
Second.
There are a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have two consent items to consider this evening. They are both ordinances to consider. Do any of you wish to move any items, any, either of those to the regular agenda?
Mr. President, I had a little bit of trouble hearing that, but did you ask if I would present the agenda, or consent?
That, that's correct. Will you present the consent agenda?
It's not clear, isn't it, Kevin?
Absolutely.
No, you're right.
Coming up on your screen should be tonight's consent agenda. Consent agenda item A is an agreement for debt collection services for the Fire Department and Code Compliance Division. Item B is a correction of a scribner's error.
Having heard these ordinances, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
I move that we accept the consent and declare that the ordinances as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There are a motion and a second discussion. Ball on the motion, please.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
That was a yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
So those ordinances are passed. We will now turn to our regular agenda. Mr. Briggs, will you present item number one on the regular agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number one is an ordinance making general appropriations for the fiscal year 2021.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman? I move to accept this ordinance under the second reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
What'd they say?
There are a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Briggs, will you call, roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Mr. Briggs, will you present item number two on the regular agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Erie County Sheriff for the provision of public safety dispatching services for the city of Sandusky Police, Fire and Service Departments commencing on January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Harris?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There are a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
If I may, I, I'd just like to take a moment to recount the long history behind this current renewal of this agreement with the Sheriff's Department. This goes back to a committee on which you served in a, an effort in which Mr. Waddington was particularly persuasive and effective, but it's, it marks now, oh, I think it's at least 10 years, maybe it's as many as 15 years, pushing 15 years, in which we've had this kind of cooperation with this, with the Sheriff's Department and Perkins Township. And this was the beginning of what is now a pretty well-established history of governments in Erie County getting along with each other, cooperating with each other. It started at the grassroots level, in which I mean, which case, I mean, the firefighters and the police officers working together cooperatively across jurisdictions. But we shouldn't take this for granted. We are very lucky to be in this place where we're getting along with our neighbors and we're able to hold down costs and, as we've found over the years, improve services as a result of that level of cooperation. We need to remain open, in my opinion, to every avenue and opportunity for that kind of cooperation going forward. That's the way we can best serve our constituents, our, our former, well, the current, our, our former colleague and, and current city manager here, and had an excellent column the other day, in which he spoke directly to these opportunities that we've been presented and that we've taken advantage of. And I'm just so grateful that we have the support of our surrounding community, the neighbors, in these kinds of efforts, and am especially pleased to be able to continue this history in Sandusky. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. The, the name of that committee which I chaired was called the Police Participation Committee. And I, I think it's interesting looking back on that time, and I don't recall if it was 2008, '09, or '10, along in that range, but it's interesting it was called the Police Participation Committee Week. There was one other entity participating at the time, and that was the Sheriff's Department, because that's where the dispatch was going to be moved to. And since then, or subsequent to that point in time, we have had great participation from a variety of places. Hereon is involved, Perkins Township is involved, Bayview then was involved, Mark, so, so many other entities decided to throw in and come along. And you're right, that, that is exactly what, that is the best of government, when you can, when you can all work together for a common good. And in this case, one of the common goods was saving each, each municipality and each jurisdiction a boatload of money. So I believe it has been successful in that regard and in response time. So looking back on that, it was certainly a worthwhile endeavor.
Mr. Chairman?
Would that be Commissioner Meinzler?
Meinzler, yeah. Hey, yeah, I just wondered, since I was involved in the first initiative going for regional dispatch and computer aided dispatch and automatic aid and vehicle recommendations, I just wondered if anybody's still working on that? Does anybody know?
Commissioner Meinzler?
Yeah.
Through you, Mr. President, we're still, it's still a process, this dispatching, getting automatic dispatched with Perkins Fire and improving mutual aid with other areas. We're still working on that area to develop that automatic aid as far as getting dispatched, just to dispatch what, what closest vehicle in, in certain locations and actually, you know, sending the call to, like me, the shift commander, then I'd have to dispatch it. We're getting to that point where hopefully we achieve that, where we don't have to do that, the dispatching, we'll just dispatch those appropriate units.
Well, thank you. It sounds like the same way we did it, you know, like in the '60s.
Yeah, we're, I mean-
So I hope this progress continues, but, you know, it's been a long time, and I really hope somebody at the Sheriff's Office is working on making this work. We bought a lot of equipment, we bought a lot of software, we bought mobile data terminals for all the trucks, which have to be obsolete by now, I think. So I really like to see that initiative, that really, over the next four years, hopefully grabs some foothold and take off.
We're getting there, we're working on it. It's, it takes a little time, but I think eventually we'll get there. I know Chief Oliver, he was involved when he was with the county, he did a lot of good work as far as getting the dispatchers and Sheriff Sigsworth and, you know, putting this together. So dispatching has improved, but, you know, of course, we can always improve on it.
Yeah, they dispatch for 19 different agencies now, between police and fire, and some of that automatic aid that you spoke about, sir, it, it is set up in different entities. Sandusky's the biggest entity, so it's a process, there's a lot of clerical stuff that has to go into it, but basically the way it is now, it's kind of unwritten automatic aid. So if there's a residential or commercial fire in the city of Sandusky, it's automatic toned to Sandusky, and then they automatically tone Perkins Township. It's not set up to do it generated in the system yet, because the system's kind of not really working the way we thought it was going to. So that's sort of getting buttoned up as it goes, but the dispatchers sort of have the automatic aid thing just about down.
Additional discussion, Commissioners? Mr. Briggs, will you call and roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yeah.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda, and we'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Thank you, Commission President Brady, Commissioners, staff, and anyone listening in the community tonight. I'll start my remarks with the donations. First, a donation of $30 was received from Kathleen Fitz for the Sandusky Police Department. I ask for a motion to accept that donation.
There are a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, with our thanks to Miss Fitz.
Right. Secondly, the sec, the City of Sandusky Recreation Department would like to thank the For Love With Love Charity for their donation of $1,000 for the 2021 Midtown Supper Club program. The donation will be used for staffing and supplies, and ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
There are a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, with our thanks for the $1,000 donation.
Moving on to administration. To help accommodate working individuals and families, start times for numerous boards and commissions have been suggested by the City Commission to shift to after-work hours. The boards have been very receptive as we've taken the potential of moving start times for the boards and commissions meeting them on a case-by-case basis. For most of the up-to-date listings of dates and times for the various boards and commissions, visit the city's website at citiofsandusky.com, and we will continue to work with the various boards and commissions to adjust those start times to make them more convenient over time, but honoring also the will of the independent boards and commissions at, at this date. Also, the Code Compliance Division has issued the 24-Hour Boulevard Nuisance Abatement notification, and it's been published in the newspaper for the coming year, 2021. Moving on to the Police Department, Officer Cody Savage, who previously served as Reserve Officer, was hired full-time on January 4th, and Officer Adam Frost, who served as Reserve Officer, was hired full-time on January 7th. The addition Nicholas Blackford was hired as a Reserve Officer on January 7th, and Administrative Assistant Wendy Roach retired on January 6th with over 32 years of service to the Sandusky Police Department. We commend Wendy for a job well done. Moving on to the Fire Department, a conditional offer of employment has been made to Daniel Eiffel, and for the Finance Department, the next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for this Friday, January 15th at 8:00 a.m. Due to COVID-19, the meeting will not be open to the public, but it can be viewed on the city's YouTube channel. Any item for the public participation section of the meeting can be emailed to the Finance Director at M. Reader, that's M.R.E.E.D.E.R. at C.I. dot Sandusky dot O.H. dot U.S. by 4:00 p.m. on January 14th. For community development, oh, sorry, I went to the wrong side. Water and sewer rates for 2021 have been increased by 3%. This measure was approved in 2015. An additional information can be found in the codified ordinances 939.13 and 933.25, also effective January 21st. All billings will be sent only to the property owner. Tenants are still welcome to pay the bill. Bills can be paid through the city's free automatic bill pay service. Payments are also accepted online for a fee, in person in the City Hall lobby, or by mailing the payments to the City of Sandusky at 240 Columbus Avenue, Sandusky, Ohio 44870. Payments can also be dropped into the drop box located curbside at the corner of Columbus Avenue and East Washington Row, adjacent to City Hall. For public works, property owners are reminded that depositing leaves into the street is considered littering and leads to clogged sewers and possible flooding. Additionally, it's recommended that property owners remove any debris that accumulates on top of neighborhood storm drains and dispose of it. We're extending the leaf drop-off period for those who still have leaves to clean up. Residents are welcome to drop off leaves near the Marquette Drive entrance to the City Service Center seven days a week until the end of this month. Also, annual snow removal reminders. Many residents rely on walking in transit as their primary means of getting around, and without a clear path, it's especially difficult. Property owners are required to clear their sidewalks and adjacent sidewalk ramps during or immediately following winter storms. We strongly urge residents to assist their neighbors who may not be physically capable of snow removal. Also, property owners who handle snow removal of parking lots and driveways are reminded not to push snow into the street or into the opposing tree lawn. And motorists are asked to pay close attention to snow emergency routes throughout the city. In the event of heavy snowfall, a parking ban may be implemented, and any vehicle parked on these streets may be ticketed or towed. And then finally, for public works, a reminder that Christmas tree collection will be performed by forestry staff this week. Please refer to the city's website or call 419-627-5829 for more information. Similarly, crews will continue to take down Christmas tree decorations throughout downtown as weather permits this month. Now, moving on to community development, I wanted to pause for a second and recognize that we have a new director with us this evening, Jonathan Holliday. We're excited to welcome Jonathan to the team. He started last Monday and has a full week under his belt, and came back this week, so we took him as a good sign. We didn't annudge him too much, but I'm sure you'll have a chance to hear from Jonathan i, i, in, in the moments ahead, but very happy he comes from New Glid. He served as the Director of Development and Planning for a little over eight years, and then had several years working in the Economic Development Department of Cuyahoga County before he took over in New Glid, so he brings a great deal of wealth and experience and, and, and will need it as we have a really aggressive development and planning agenda for the city. In addition to that, a notification that the Community Development Department submitted an application to the Ohio CDC Association Vista Project to host an AmeriCorps Vista member. Vista members are 18 years or older and serve full-time for one year. Vista members focus their efforts on building organizational, administrative, and financial capacity for organizations that fight illiteracy, improve health services, foster economic development, strengthen community groups, and otherwise assist low-income individuals and communities. The program fee is $1,600 to host a Vista for a one-year period. If selected, the Sandusky Vista member will begin on June 7th of this year. Also, just some meeting updates for the Planning Department. Arts and Culture Commission is scheduled for Tuesday, January 19th at 5:15 p.m. Landmark Commission is scheduled for Wednesday, January 20th at 4:30 p.m. Board of Zoning Appeals is scheduled for January 21st at 4:30, and Planning Commission is scheduled for January 27th at 5:00 p.m. There will be a presentation of the Downtown Sandusky Master Plan at 7:00 p.m. to the Planning Commission, and then that same presentation will be made either later this month or early next month to the City Commission. For recreation, Ralph Chamberlain of Sandusky and Jackie Hammernick of Norwalk are the winners of the prize package for the 2020 Rondusky Race Series. Their names are drawn from over 40 participants that qualified by participating in more than four race events in 2020. Chamberlain and Hammernick will receive free entry to participating races in 2021 and a $50 gift card to the North Shore Running Store located on East Market Street. Finally, the Rondusky Race Series is a partnership, Sandusky Rack and the Fire Owens Regional Health System. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to take any questions from the Commission.
Commissioners, if there are questions or comments, the city manager?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to your comment on the emergency snow ban. You indicated to the public that there may be a ban on emergency snow streets. If I'm not mistaken, if there's over two inches of snow, it is a snow ban. And I would like to get that clarified, because I, if you're gonna, if you think on your direction of public works, we decide whether or not there's a ban, there's no way to communicate that effectively to community. It either exists or it doesn't. How you deal with that and implement that law is up to you, but I, I just don't want to start with the staff deciding that there may not be a ban if they don't want it. It's two inches of snow, I understand it's an emergency snow ban, and people should just know that that's what it is, which, and the sign says they can tow your car, but it's not comfortable with you changing it in midstream.
I don't know if Director Klein wants to speak to, through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole. I did not view this as a change in policy, if something in the, the way that I framed it made it appear to be so, and Director Klein wants to clarify what the policy is, that would be helpful, I think.
Director Klein, are you with us?
Pardon?
Through you, Mr. President. Commissioner Poole, you, you are correct, it's not a decision that staff makes in the moment, it is that those streets are snow streets, emergency snow ban is in effect. Our crews will work with the Police Department if there are cars parked out there, so you are correct, and I apologize for that error.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Klein. Additional comments or questions for the city manager? If not, the next item on our agenda are items of old business. Commissioners, any items of old business to bring up? Black King Items of Old Business will move to Items of New Business. Any items of new business to bring up, Commissioner? I have, I have shared with each of you in an email over the weekend my selection and my recommendation for appointments to city boards. At, at this commission table, recently Commissioner Murray spoke of the need to improve the makeup of our volunteer board members on our boards and commissions to a more diverse group, and, and diverse not just in age or race or gender, but diverse in their, in their skillset and their resumes and their willingness to serve and their connections in this community. This message seems to have resonated with a lot of members, or quite a few members of our community, in that we've received applications from a variety of residents. To make these selections, I consulted with the staff, with McKenzie, with, with the city manager, related to the work of, of each board and commission with the goal of recruiting strong new board members while, while increasing the overall representation of our boards and our commissions. I'm going to ask McKenzie if she will, to put those recommendations up on, up on your monitors so you can view them in, in real time.
President Brady, they should be up on your screen now. I can scroll as you talk, if you would like.
Excellent, and, and I'm, you know, I'm not going to demean you folks by reading to you, but I will just share with you that the Civil Service Appointment is a reappointment of Mr. James Magooki. That goes on until 2026. That is a, that is the president's appointment. And then the next, the next three are the president's appointment, of course, with the consent of the City Commission, and, and that is, uh, I want to back that up. It's Alexis Miller in the Audit Finance Committee, Charles Kippi-Lockland in the Sandusky Tree Commission, and Greg Pougeau in the Board of Zoning Appeals. Moving on, the next appointment are, are actually my recommendations, but it certainly is the commission appointments, and that is, Community Relations is Alexandria Esposito. Erie Regional Planning Commission Appointment is Nick Lexikos. Landmark Commission is Ryan Whaley. Recreation is, Commission Appointment is Devon Johnson. And Economic Development is a manager's appointment with the consent of the, of the commission, that is Jamarcus Hampton. Again, a manager's appointment with the consent of the commission is, for Public Arts and Culture is Sean Patrick Thomas Daley. And in addition to that, the manager has two appointments, Fire Prevention, which is Dennis Martin Schmink, and Residential Building Code of Appeals, which are two people, both Greg Schmidt and Greg Zimmerman. Those are the manager's appointment with the consent of the, of the commission. I would ask for a motion to accept these appointments?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waddington?
Prior to that, I, if I could, I'd like to ask, when we have new names surface, and that's great that we're getting new candidates, but how about, I read mine over the weekend too, and if it's someone new that none of us are aware of, a small bio would certainly help, a little background, maybe two sentences, what they do, where they come from, what's the background? That was a concern of mine. Not your picks or the city manager's picks, that's yours, but the ones that the City Commission votes on, I certainly hope going forward that at one time we had, that we had little bios of each person that wanted to be appointed or on the boards, and I applaud that we got a good turnout this time, and I'm excited about that. But I just think a bio, I know I've talked to two or three Commissioners over the weekend, I had no clue who some of these people are. That's just my two cents worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Waddington.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
I concur with Commissioner Waddington. I received this information this morning, and I also, although I recognize some of the names on the list, they are, for the most part, I don't know very much about them. I don't have a reason to, to oppose their appointments, but in the future, yes, we do need to have, it's good that you had talked to the staff about all these appointments, but they're actually commission appointments, so enjoy, and allowing us to join the party would probably have been nicer. Additionally, as I looked at all the applications of other folks who, names I didn't necessarily recognize, and I did look at their, at least the applications, there is a lot, a lot- recognize, and I did look at their, at least the applications, there is a lot of people, way more than I'm normally accustomed to seeing, with a great deal of expertise, education that could be of value to this, to this community. There was one application from an individual from Norwalk that, when I read his resume, what was in there, he was, would have been more than an asset to us. So going forward, I didn't have much time today. I'd like to consider how perhaps we can figure a way to include some of these folks who are not on your list for selection to the board and incorporate them and see if we can get them to do, help with some decisions in some way in the city. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent suggestion, Commissioner Poole. And it's my intention to almost immediately reach out to every person that applied for these positions to volunteer to help the city. Reach out to each of them and express my thanks to them and to encourage them to stay in the game, so to speak, because we do have people moving off of boards for a variety of reasons, some work-related, some health-related, some people get termed out. Mr. Murray's lobbying both us and the community was extremely successful a few weeks ago because we, you're right, Commissioner Poole, we got a, we got a host of excellent applications. I think that bodes well for our city, and I am not going to turn a blind eye to any of those people. I intend to personally reach out to them, not via email and not via letter, but by a personal phone call to thank them for applying and to ensure them that their talents are valuable to us and we hope to be able to use them in the future. Thank you for that suggestion also. Additional comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Murray?
I don't recall that there was a motion, so I think there wasn't a motion, I'm going to make a motion to approve these recommendations and appoint these folks to these various boards and commissions.
Got a motion and a second? I think, I don't know there was, but been a motion and a second, and now I guess we'll have a discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Murray?
I'd simply like to add that over the years, I've, you know, I've encountered different people who I meet who are very enthusiastic about various areas. I do encourage them to apply, and sometimes I'll get their email address and I'll ask the commission clerk to send them an application. You know, all of us are representatives of the community, and I think that's something that we should, I would encourage all of us to do that, is to find somebody who's enthusiastic about recreation, or our trees and our public parks, or about economic development, and you know, all sorts of different, there are all sorts of different ways to serve. And as Mr. Poole indicated, there's a ton of expertise out there. We just need to, you know, sometimes it's a matter of encouraging people to apply so that when we see that kind of expertise and enthusiasm, we can best take advantage of that. Thank you.
Additional discussion? Mr. Spring, we would call and roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Those appointments are confirmed, and we will, I'll ask the commission clerk to reach out to those successful candidates and let them know that also. One additional, one additional bit of news and appointment that I would like to share with the commission and ask for your blessing on as I am appointing Commissioner Murray as a liaison and as a voting member to the Planning Commission, I'd ask for a motion to confirm that appointment. Got a motion and a second discussion?
Boy, it took a, took a lot of arm twisting.
Yeah, I thought we'd never get the second, but it finally did work out.
Well, you weren't going to get it from me. I'm still haven't decided how I'm going to vote.
Mr. Spring, before he gets away, will you, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yep, as quickly as I can. Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That appointment is confirmed. Mr. Murray, you are now stuck. Miss, any additional items of new business, commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Harris?
Yeah, I was just wondering if McKenzie might be able to provide us with some stats as far as those who applied compared to maybe years past, just to kind of see if the numbers may have been up. I know we've kind of done that of like, social media push, if you would. So I just thought it'd be kind of nice just to, just to know, you know, where we're at with that, just so we can try to, you know, maybe do some, you know, add to it going forward.
Mr. Spring, can we cut on you to take on that task?
I can do that. I'll send something out.
Awesome. Thank you much, Kenz.
And if I could, quickly through the Commission President, to Commissioner Harris and the other commissioners, anecdotally, we did see a lot more applications and interest this year, and I want to give a big thanks to all of the city commissioners who pushed for that, as well as McKenzie, who did a lot of work in trying to rally internally the different staff that oversee boards and commissions. I think the commissioners, that you guys made good points tonight about making sure that we get all of that information out to all of you in time before this. But I really do think, you know, this was a broader process that was undertaken this year, and it was urged by the city commission. McKenzie did a great job in her first year as clerk, really getting, coordinating all of that. And of course, we'll need to build on it and learn from it every year, but I was excited to see just how much interest and how many more applications did come in this year.
Mr. Spring, are there any communications from residents regarding city business to be read?
President Brady, we did receive one communication to be read. It comes from Mr. Tim Schwanger at 362 Sheffield Way. He said, "My concerns this evening pertain to how the city commission conducts public hearings under the revised open meetings law during the COVID-19 pandemic. On March 3rd, 2020, the open, or the Ohio Open Meeting Law was amended as," and I quote, "When it, the public government body, is conducting a public hearing, the public body also must utilize electronic equipment and technology which is widely available to the general public and which permits the public to converse with witnesses and to receive documentary, testimony, and physical evidence," end quote. A search of the city's webpage, the city's social media outlets, and previous city commission meetings do not indicate how the general public can call to join public hearings for verbal comment. Please rectify this issue."
Regarding, regarding that piece of communication, I would reach out at this point to our law director and ask him to research that, that communication, research that law. And if you would, Brendan, make sure that we are in compliance with that, and if we're not, we'll develop a plan to get in compliance with it. But I will, I will ask our law director to take on that task. If there is nothing else, I will, prior to entertaining a motion to adjourn, I would like to, Mr. Whipser, you can shut off your microphone because I'm going to ask that we all pray for a victory tonight by the Ohio State Buckeyes. I know that, I know that Mr. Whipser is probably rooting for Alabama.
Never.
That is not the case. Good to hear that. Go Buckeyes. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second? We're adjourned. Have a good evening, folks.